Just like that. And so ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Andrew Dennis, running for Marion County Commissioner.
Thank you so much to everybody who joined us today. And just thank you in general to the Marion County Democrats for conducting a forum with the candidates for the upcoming election. I feel incredibly honored to be here. For those of you who have not met me in person or heard me speak before, my name is Andrew Dennis, and I am humbly here to ask for your support in Marion County Commissioner, position one, against Mr. Kevin Cameron, who many of you have known in the last two terms, and in this case, perhaps even when he was House Representative. Now, in this case, a little bit about me, I actually grew up here in the county. I went to Auburn Elementary, Hough Middle School, graduated from North Salem High School. Many of you probably again grew up around the area and hopefully saw me as a little kiddo delivering smiles to you and flowers in hand. My family's owned two businesses basically in the county for the last 30 years. And in this case, I've watched it grow, you know, for better or worse into what it is today. I currently obtained two bachelor's degrees, one in economics, one in sociology from Portland State University. And in this case, put together those degrees and went to work for a couple of state agencies. In this case, as a leader and a manager in this instance for Oregon Employment Department, as an operations and policy analyst for the Oregon Employment Department, and now as an operations and policy analyst for Oregon Housing and Community Services. For those of you that don't know what an operations and policy analyst does, kind of ties into my background, I more or less take legislative concepts or ideas that a lot of politicians tend to have. And in this case, I review those ideas and I put pen to paper in terms of trying to figure out how to operationalize or develop those programs that they have in mind. In this case, I was tasked, just unfortunately during the pandemic that we all experienced. But fortunate for me, gained a lot of experience, but I was tasked with helping develop the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program. And I was quite literally in the trenches again as a leader and somebody training as we were learning. And I know what it takes to have an enterprise approach, meaning I know what it takes to lead and manage, not only, you know, on that small level within an agency, but even on a county level, to make things run efficiently and effectively and enhance basically the stewardship that we provide as, you know, public employees. And in this case, I went after Pandemic Unemployment Assistance into more or less working on the the CARES Act funds for homeownership. And in this case, my background in homeownership stems from having a real estate license and working hand in hand with IBM as a manager doing foreclosure prevention. And so during the pandemic, I had more or less firsthand dealt with all of the people in my local community and the state losing their jobs and their livelihoods. And I watched how not prepared we were for the emergency and how much of our policies in hindsight had been reactionary rather than preventative. In this case, I always get asked, you know, how are we going to address instability for housing? Or how are we going to fix homelessness? And I mean, it's a very valid question. In this case, obviously, I'm going to bring leadership to the table and I'm going to communicate with entities. And that's besides the point. But I truly think the valid question we should be asking is how did we get here? We didn't get here out of nowhere. And it wasn't just because of, let's say, a pandemic. There were problems beforehand. Again, I was a part of foreclosure prevention. We've all been a part of hardest hit funds or what be it, you know, over the decades. But in this case, I'm watching my local community suffer from what I believe is inaction from policy updates that again are reactionary. So after living that and being in the trenches and obviously developing more or less two programs that are overseen by the Treasury Department, I asked myself, how can I do something different? And how can I bring the transparency, the compassion, the accountability that I would expect out of a leader to the people that I love, to basically my parents who are retiring and in this case, maybe closing their businesses soon, or my nieces and nephews who are about to start school and venture into the many school districts we have. And long story short, it really just tied down to, I don't feel like we're adequately prepared and we need momentum to change Marion County, to change basically how things currently are. And that's why I'm currently obtaining my master's degree from Oregon State University in Public Policy. Again, I've been in the trenches as a state employee for nearly five years. I've firsthand seen us react to things. And I would just like to see a true change and a Democrat to be inside the county commissioners board and overseeing the budget and giving you all the transparency that you so desperately deserve and the customer service that you would anticipate from a county entity. So those are the things that again, I come here, experience and stand for. But I've always advocated for a pro environment policy. I'm endorsed by the Oregon League of Conservation Voters. My website, changeformarian.com is something I encourage all of you to, you know, reference. But I have wrote an extensive article on Covanta Marion and some of the difficulties we see there. I will be putting out an article very soon on my thoughts related to psilocybin policy and how it affects the county. So there's quite a few issues that I'm very eager to discuss with everybody here. But for the sake of time, and again, just grand interjections, it's very nice to meet you all. And I don't know how I'm doing on time.
You're doing great. You're doing great. Nice introduction. Let's open it up for questions. You can either raise your hand or you can just speak up. Eileen?
Yes, with Marion County, I do have some stuff that you could use against Cameron. You can contact me. This is the worst county commission we've ever had. It is very right wing in all aspects of life. And they are, their major decision making is in land use. Because all the other stuff, the city or the county manager Fritz does all that stuff. And all their managers of all the agencies and everybody else really does the work. They just kind of rubber stamp everything, but not land use. They cannot stand the state of Oregon. They badmouth it constantly. They do not like our state land use laws. And we are living, we who do protection of land use are living at Luba. And they, every case that comes before them for a permit for something on farmland, a conditional use permit, they are approving, even though their planning staff recommends no. The hearings officer recommends no. Their county attorney recommends no. They don't care. So they are, and I said to them, and they got real mad at me. I just, when I was testifying against the last one, I said, you guys are wasting a lot of our tax dollars because you know what you're doing isn't legal and you're doing it anyway. And they got real mad. But anyway, there, I have the cases if you want to use it in some material or something. Because we tried to change, a bunch of us tried to change the structure of Marion County in 2010. We had a ballot measure at the county level to change it to five commissioners elected by district. Because the way it is now, the chamber elects everybody because it's too big to win. You can't go door to door, you know, for the whole county. And the newspaper, The Statesman, which was very active at the time, said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And nobody knew, so many people don't know what the county government does. They didn't know how to express all the bad things that were going on. And that's still true today. But an easy place to point out the bad things that they're doing is land use planning. So anyway, I, I have some cases, some specific examples where we've been winning these cases and they've been wasting our tax dollars and our time. Thanks.
No, I appreciate that, Eileen. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. And in this case, I would love to connect with you just in relation to, you know, kind of mismanagement of funds. I'm not sure how many of you are narrowed in on kind of the COVID-19 funds that were provided to the county and how much has been expended versus obligated. Me personally, just kind of tracing through, you know, the entities that are tied to the funds that are already expended. In this case, I kind of see their connections to the current commissioners. And some of them are very clear and bold and out in the open. And you see clear as day that it's connected to the entities in which they're funding. And some of them are just a, oh, here's the, the arm's length, if you will. And part of this again is just transparency that if you aren't knowing what to look for and you're not digging, then you're not going to find it. But in this case, as somebody that has been required to report to Treasury, I know in this case, anytime that we're awarded grants and we're provided funds and if they're mismanaged, we're not going to see that much funds the next go around. Because in this case, if they have to take it back because it's not efficiently used or correctly used. And right now, that's the, the type of issues that I feel like the public isn't aware of. And I mean, this was millions upon billions of dollars that we were handed in this case in COVID-19. And I believe the number is just shy of 70 million that the county was provided for the more recent CARES Act. So for those of you that don't know, I'll try and link it. But there is current websites as to what is expended, what is obligated. And it's eye opening to see which ones have already had money go out the door and how many of us are still waiting for those projects to fund a year later, year and a half later. So.
I think what a lot of people didn't understand about the ARPA funds is that, is that that went directly to each of the state senators and lawmakers, the representatives, they all got a bucket of money to spend. And they could spend it however they wanted. So the idea of mismanagement was kind of like, well, if you're going to give such carte blanche by just giving it out. And I had really extrapolated that to the county and how much the county commission would have gotten. But I did notice in their latest newsletter, they talked about how some of those funds were allocated.
Correct. Some of them, you know, whether we believe in it or not, used to reimburse perhaps expansion of buildings that have occurred because of or as they relate to the pandemic. More or less people saying that, hey, because of the pandemic, we had to socially distance. We had to create more space, which is understandable. Again, my family owns flower shops. It was an interesting avenue trying to navigate all of that. My brother's a tattoo artist. Again, interesting way of navigating these policies. But to see reimbursement of funds to certain organizations, but not others, or certain entities, but not others, specifically for those purposes, when there's so many businesses in our county that for better or worse, had to operate differently during the pandemic is just eye opening. And, and I'd love to see again, more transparency and accountability related to that and how those funds are used. So.
All right. Our next question, Mary Ann.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernie. Hi, Andrew. Some of the folks have heard this before because we've all been on all these, with all these different candidates. But there was a, a video from Morning Joe that I saw this past week where he had Frank Luntz on, who was doing his focus groups and data collection. And of course, I'm going, oh, Frank Luntz, he's just basically a mouthpiece for the Republican Party. And do I really want to listen to him or not? But it turned out that what he pointed out, he did this big focus group. And half the group were folks who voted for Trump and half the group for folks who voted for Biden. And one of the issue that they all had in common and would agree on is their concern for a place to live. So, and as we're looking at all the houseless and homeless, but not only that, but the folks who, as there's apartment buildings that just got built south of me. And I found out that one of those two bedroom apartments has kind of cost $2,000 a month for anybody. So if, how in the world are folks being able to even keep a roof over their head with the kind, those kind of wages aren't happening here in town?
And Mary Ann, it's so nice to see you again. I know it's been a little bit, but thank you so much for that question. And it hits close to home, just in the sense that I work for Oregon Housing and Community Services and devoting the more recent years of my stewardship to trying to address kind of similar problems. Granted, I have been on the more, I'll acknowledge privileged side in the sense of homeownership, trying to protect equity that exists, being able to transfer that generational wealth to the, you know, the next person. But I think the way that I would address that and some of the things that I'm actually currently focused on with regards to legislative concepts in this upcoming session is things related to how to address fixed income populations. So a lot of people are familiar with tax deferral programs. And that's truly what it is, is a deferral. It's something that pushes it aside and in this case, doesn't necessarily address it. And so these are issues that at least on a homeownership level, you know, that's a population that is often disenfranchised. And you don't see a lot of advocacy for, again, elderly fixed income populations. And how are they going to, to your question, Mary Ann, afford the $2,000 and rent a space? In this case, on a very fixed budget. I think the same thing is providing access to like that transition into homeownership because it is truly something that a lot of people are wanting to see. You know, be it interest rates, be it competition, it's been a very, very crazy market. And we don't see the availability there. And on the rental side, I work alongside some incredibly passionate and dedicated individuals that I am honored to at least have the network and the bridge with that I feel have done the best, given the circumstances for like things like emergency rental assistance, the other programs that exist related to, you know, utility payment assistance and what be it. But it still doesn't, I believe, cover the full need that we're wanting to see, Mary Ann. And, and in this case, I feel like it also has to be addressed from the wage component. Granted, that's difficult for a lot of people. I mean, speaking to my own heart, you know, anybody that is self-employed, runs a business, it can be hard to compete against the Amazon wages or the things that we invite into an area. But at the same time, it's something that hopefully provides that gap of, of something that isn't necessarily minimum wage. So.
Well, also on another, on another part of this, that the, even as I'm driving around downtown and I'm seeing big areas that are surrounded by chain link fences that have no buildings on them, that are near the transit center, that basically are, you know, would be close to medical facilities. I would, I would recommend that we start building taller buildings, seeing all these images coming out of Ukraine, which is a farm country, and seeing all these great big tall buildings that people are living in. Realizing that we need to be building big tall buildings in Salem to build a, keep, have the use of the infrastructure, the sewers and the water and the electricity and the phones and the internet connections that are already in those places, rather than building out into the edges, which I think is a thing that strong towns is, is pushing for. But the ability to build more housing that's taller and that would also be affordable, whether it's an apartment or condos, I think would be much a better way to provide the housing here in this area. But I think again, the commissioners have a lot to do with permitting that kind of building.
Your housing background obviously gives you some, some good experience in that, doesn't it?
It's honestly, I'm just thankful to know the individuals to network with because part of a job as a commissioner is truly relying upon the institutional knowledge that exists. And something that I think was highlighted, you know, before was that a lot of times these commissioners currently are not relying upon those that know what they're doing or who are providing the advice, whether it be about land contracts or whether it be about rental assistance or, or these different programs. And so again, I will try my best, if elected, to activate those current existing networks and continue to build upon them, going to, let's say, my director, you know, specifically in saying, how can I address this problem? So.
Good to hear. Thanks. Marcia.
One thing with the ARPA funds, the legislators were only given a certain portion of it. A lot of the other money went other ways. One of the other things about the county commission is the lack of, the lack of transparency and ability to utilize their advisory commissions on what they were doing. And this is directly related to deciding that there's plenty of opportunity for people to get reproductive health services around the county and closing basically all of the women's reproductive health services. And that should resonate. But you need to make, be aware that some of the money that the legislators gave probably went to county related things, not all of it. And there was still a lot of other money that went to the counties.
So something that you mentioned, Marcia, which is incredibly important, which is, you know, just public health, reproductive rights, access to actual, you know, clinics that provide a lot of the screening that many of us rely upon daily and especially for an affordable rate. And something that you also touched upon is that they're actively working against that while supporting a more so a different initiative. In this case, when I'm looking at those COVID funds that are, you know, provided to the county and I see the 70 million, you know, be it for whatever reason, but seeing a lot of those funds already expended out the door. For those that don't know, expended means, hey, we've already provided it. Obligated means we've promised or basically given the impression that we're going to provide it, right? So in this case, when you look at the 7% or 8% that has actually been expended by the county in terms of those funds, that's $70 million. A portion of the expended is going to literally Hope Pregnancy Clinic, which does provide, you know, certain great services, but also is at the same time backed for a specific purpose. And in that case, the board, it's, it's very well known which churches they are coordinated with. In this case, Commissioner Cameron is one of those churches, which is fine. I belonged to it when I grew up. And then in this case, you look at the other side of the coin and you see that the charities that are related to that organization, you have Colm Willis, who is actually on the board. So it's just a little too close for comfort for me to see some of those funds allocated towards certain things and expended, so out the door, while the other, in this case, 92% of it is sitting here, not effectively there. And for me, being somebody that was, you know, helping with Pandemic Unemployment Assistance, again, you can see my face on a lot of those videos. The goal was to work through getting those funds to people in the quickest or most efficient manner possible. And if we're sitting on these funds, basically accumulating interest, doing whatever we want, but obligating it, not expending it, that's not helping anyone in this room get further with the changes that we're all desiring. That's not investing in the building that Mary Ann was just talking about that's sitting here. And that's the parks that we're looking for, because some of those funds, again, they're obligated. They're obligated to the city of State and or again, the St. Paul Fire Department, all great things. But they're sitting here and they're not expended yet. And my goal with that is, if you look on the Marion County website, the top five things they mentioned literally is enterprise approach being one of those five. It's how do you efficiently get the funds that you're receiving to the public? And how do you manage those and collaborate with all the different organizations to make it possible? And I just don't see that happening right now.
My, my point was, is you brought up, you know, some of the legislators, you know, giving them some funds. And I think that it would be better to just concentrate on the funds that they got directly that they haven't obligated, that they haven't expended, rather than getting mixed up on some of the mutual goals with the legislators. And work on the fact that they, without consultation, basically from their own committee, decided that the reproductive health program was not valuable. This is also a county that has not one high school clinic.
Yeah, health center.
Yes. And in this case, you know, Marcia, I will truly try and continue to focus on the $70 million that was provided to the county and not necessarily the legislators. This was specifically to Marion County and how they're addressing that portion of the budget. There is an obligation for, you know, $2 million, I believe is the figure again, I'll, I'll check myself. But $2 million, I believe, was quoted towards Kaiser Athletic Fields. There was stuff associated to St. Paul Fire District. There was stuff associated to the, the parks that we're all waiting on. But there is stuff associated to Hope Pregnancy Clinic. There's stuff associated to Catholic Community Services, which again, I've worked with, providing services to refugees in the area during the pandemic. So there's a lot of great services that those entities provide. But there's also a lot of organizations that publicly are not even aware of how to apply for these grants. And part of the transparency that I'd like to work on is that, you know, the average person, the Lories, the Rebecca's, the Lees, myself, whether we own a business, whether we are a nonprofit, there's access to grant funds and money on the table that can be actively used on a grassroots or a more local level that I feel like is not being advertised to us or are properly utilized. And again, I will try my best, as you said, Marcia, to focus on that $70 million and not the legislative funds that are happening.
Thank you. Good. By the way, also just because I'm interested, I think most of us on the call are interested in having a more progressive voice on the, on the county commission. Just so you know, Marcia Kelly is our legislative chair. So she's always up to the, up to date with what's going on with legislation, not just now, but the history of it. So she is an excellent resource. Sorry for the plug, Marcia, but you know, you're just that good. So I just wanted to lay that out there for you, Andrew, as you build your kind of, your, your team around you. Our next question.
And Marcia spent years on the Cherry's Board.
Well, I feel very privileged to have her in my corner. I myself have only participated in two legislative sessions and a special session. But I'd imagine there's years of experience there, Marcia. So thank you very much for your question as well.
Yeah. Our next question comes from Cassia.
Casia.
Casia, sorry, there we go.
That's all right. Everybody gets it wrong. So we've had quite a lot of talk about various aspects of healthcare so far, but we haven't yet touched on mental health yet. And historically, years ago, when we had Fairview, when Fairview was shut down, lots and lots of mentally disabled people were released upon the streets. And some went to group homes and some were just let go. But what was important was if there was a caveat to all of this, which was that in order for them, these people who needed mental health care to be on the streets there, the county was also supposed to provide mental health counselors that were to go out, meet with those people, monitor their medications, make sure that they were getting the services that they needed as outpatients rather than inpatients. Well, the county in its wisdom sometime later decided that those people were just way too expensive and that the city should pick up the cost, I guess, for taking care of them and so forth. It seemed to me that that was a very good idea. And that in light of the fact that we have a significant portion of mentally ill people living on the streets now that cannot access services or don't have the mental facilities to be able to access services, we might want to consider reinstating the on the street mental health counselors. Now, I know we're trying to build these, I forget what they're called. What are they called anyway? These coordination centers, you know, where you've got mental health people and all that sort of stuff. But the idea of taking, having a health counselor go to the individual wherever they are on the street is what is important here. You can't ask somebody with a mental disability to say, walk halfway across town to a coordination center to get the help they need. Some may be able to do it, but there are whole lots that cannot. Now, especially if you're in the middle of a schizophrenic break or something like that, you're not going to be thinking, oh yeah, you need to, you know, somehow get over to, you know, whatever, you know. So it seems to me that that's a program that where your 70 million could be applied and actually have a real effect in helping individuals on a personal level and eventually in the long term, reducing homelessness, we hope. So that's just a comment, you know, but you might want to address thoughts on how we are going to deal with the mentally ill that are on our streets.
Thank you, Casia, for your comment. And in this case, I believe if I am referencing the number again correctly, it's about 14 and a half percent of the ARPA funds that were related to like public health. of the ARPA funds that were related to like public health. And for me, that's a little shocking just because again, the reason the funds were provided is because we were seeing a health pandemic. So when I'm seeing a huge allotment and then 14 and a half, you know, provided for that purpose. Um, I, I kind of questioned the amount or the decision behind the, you know, purpose or the allotment. Um, I know at least from my experience with housing that we rely heavily on counselors to be the, what I refer to, um, as like the street level, um, you know, person that's administering all of this policy. And, uh, truly, uh, the feet on the ground and those smaller, uh, organizations are what do the backbone of a lot of government work. And, uh, like housing wise, there's only a couple that assist our county, right? And so to your point, uh, how do you expect somebody from, let's say Detroit or Mill City, uh, who's accessing it or just becoming, you know, homeless, uh, or having a mental health crisis to go all the way to Salem where this one center is located? And in that case, uh, whether it be their mental capacity isn't keeping them from going there or their monetary purposes, they can't go there, they don't have a car, whatever the reason may be. Again, to your point, there needs to be a little bit more proactivity with us doing outreach. Um, and I think more feedback to what you're providing on a lot more of public hearings related to outreach coordination. Um, I know my organization tries to do their best with getting the public's opinion on how we should coordinate um, with new programs that get developed. But from a county level, I'd love to see a little bit more participation publicly about, you know, just to your point. So.
Well, the county is the major public, uh, health agency. So it has to take the lead on this kind of stuff. And it should.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I'm done.
Uh, Lori, can you make your question kind of quick and then we'll go to closing statements?
I can. Andrew, a lot of us are going to be knocking on doors and there's so many undervotes for county commissioners. What two sentences can we tell people when we go to the door? What two sentences to tell them how important it is to vote that the entire ballot and vote for county commissioners?
Oh, I love that you're limiting me to two sentences, Lori. Um, so the importance of a county commissioner in two sentences. It is important that we have a local representative who you believe can adequately address or sorry, oversee a budget and provide you the transparency, uh, that you would expect out of a local organization as being the middle person between, uh, cities and towns and the state. Because that's how I see it. I am a middle person that's collaborating between state and federal funds and city and local townships. And basically trying to make again, this beautiful symphony of a budget work. Um, not necessarily two sentences, but I know that you'll word craft that Lori, I trust your judgment and I believe in you. Um, if you could also plug in that there's psilocybin being voted upon, you know, November 8th. It's very progressive, but you will see me advocating for that as well in the county. So.
Yeah, is in the famous mantra of all of us neighborhood leaders, vote the entire ballot, uh, vote all the way down the ballot, please don't forget. So with that, Andrew, can you please give us a, a quick closing statement in like three or four minutes and we'll let you go?
Yeah. Um, well, again, I want to thank everybody for your time today and, uh, listening to me rant at about 7:30 to 8 o'clock. When I know many of you are probably, um, hungry and wanting dinner or probably eating during the meeting. So I just want to extend that first and foremost. Um, I will again, ask for your humble support, uh, in helping me change this county. Um, it's going to take a lot of momentum and in this case I went into it, uh, wondering how the average person like me could become a politician, but not the politician that I grew up with, which was somebody that I saw maybe saying one thing and doing another. But truly being the one that you guys would be able to hold accountable and, uh, doing the things that I say I'm going to do. And I always reflect on something that my fraternity had taught me and it's the expression, uh, to do what ought to be done, but would not have been done unless I did it. And what that means is that I'm always looking to take the initiative. I'm always looking for the best opportunity or the best use of our budget or our time. And in this case, I believe in the value that we have as a county. I believe that there are incredibly, uh, intelligent individuals that work amongst the agencies that again, make all of this possible. And I think it's, uh, truly about relying upon that institutional knowledge and making sure that these, uh, county employees and again, public service employees who are so tired and perhaps withered down from a pandemic and working in the trenches, uh, reinstilling that hope that the change is possible, that we aren't at this period of incrementalism that I think all of us can acknowledge has been the case for policy. Um, I would love to be, um, a diverse representation of what policy can be in Marion County. And what I mean by that is we live in a county in which in the last five years, policy within our cities basically, um, prevented individuals such as me and my husband from owning homes, living in certain communities. And we continue to see, you know, populations similar to mine, uh, disenfranchised and were not represented truly. Uh, so I'd like to continue to be a voice for not only the public, but for that diversity, that inclusion. And again, the compassion that I think all of us would expect out of somebody that is holding office. Um, I was truly, truly baffled when I saw how much funds are spent, uh, towards a board of commissioners and what seems to be three people making a lot of decisions for a lot of our tax dollars. And when I reflect at the people I work alongside with every day in those trenches, making the programs possible, developing programs like I myself have done and helping get those funds out to the public, uh, it, it fares in comparison. And, um, I would just love to see the value that we all, I guess, deserve. The last thing that I will say is that, um, you know, please take the opportunity. My website is not incredibly developed, but it is developed. Um, changeformarian.com, um, change the number for marian.com. Um, it has a little bit more of my candidate vision, a little bit more about me, my husband, my background. Um, I, I encourage all of you guys to reach out to me. Um, I know I can be an incredibly busy person just based on me working for the agencies currently. Um, but that's what I would do for you as commissioner. I would stay busy every day to try and accomplish the goals that we set out as a community. And I want to see every one of you, when I'm elected, come to those, uh, board meetings and tell me what it is that we need to work on. Because then I expect that you'll hold me accountable. Okay? Um, but, um, the last thing is if any of you need, uh, literature, if you need pamphlets, if you need yard signs, if you need anything at all, please reach out and let me know. I'm happy to give that to you and coordinate, uh, dropping that off. Anything to help me get more visibility against what would be an incumbent that has a lot of popularity. Um, so, but in this case, again, popularity isn't everything, right?
Yeah, yeah. One, two quick things. Can you put your website one more time? Put it in the chat for everybody. And while you do that, I'm going to read a real quick question that came in. It's a simple yes, no question. Will you be debating Cameron?
Uh, so in this case, I, I do not have a scheduled debate against Cameron. I would open the opportunity to have that debate because I do have a couple of questions. Um, I've recently interviewed with, uh, Statesman Journal. In this case, I know he has as well. So I got a little bit of that kind of, mm, I'll say debate, uh, but nothing formalized yet.
If you do, if you do get that set up, please let us know and we'll try to let our members know because we'd certainly want to see that, uh, live and on the air. That would be great. Andrew, thanks so much for being with us. We really appreciate having you. Appreciate your insight. We'd love to have a progressive on the Marion County Commission. So thank you. Uh, good luck with your race and, uh, let us know if there's any other ways we can help you.
Oh, thank you all so much. Again, this opportunity was a blessing and I hope that you have a wonderful rest of your night. Um, again, feel free to reach out to me. My, uh, email address and contact info is on my website.
Cool.